Good evening, everyone. This is the time for the city council meeting of November 2nd, 2015. Can we start with a roll call and determination quorum, please?
Laurenti.
Here.
Right.
Here.
Weifenbach.
Yes, I'm here.
Doyle.
Here.
Estes.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
We have quorum.
Perfect. Now, we'll go on to the invocation by Pastor Ron McLaughlin from Hillsview Church. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Pray with me. Father God, we just, we thank you and praise you, Father, for this beautiful fall day you've given us here in Rapid City. And, Lord, we thank you for allowing us to live here. And I thank you for the men and women in this room, Lord, that want to make this an even better place to live. I thank you for those on the council, Lord, that their willingness to serve and to lead in the way that they do. And, God, we pray for wisdom tonight and understanding and discernment. And I would pray that you'd have your way here, God, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States. We worship the St. John's Church. Our nation, our God, and his people.
Thank you. Now, we're on to the adoption of the agenda. Elderwoman Scott and Doyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Now, we're on to awards and recognitions.
There we go. My name is Eldine Henderson, and I am on the Standing Committee for Sustainability for Rapid City. Every once in a while, we do an award for a group or agency or a business that does something along the lines of sustainability that we think is an important asset for Rapid City. Tonight, what we're doing is we're presenting this award to an organization called Lifeways. Many of you have heard of that organization; some of you have not. So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about it. The purpose, first of all, the purpose of the Standing Committee on Sustainability is to encourage education, stewardship, and policy leadership that will make our community a leader in economic, social, and environmental sustainability. And Lifeways is an organization that works with youth to promote social, economic, and environmental sustainability. Lifeways has developed a partnership with Rapid City and the Rapid City School District to provide healthy social and mental health skills to help youth cope with difficulties of today's society, related primarily to drug and alcohol use pressures. Scientific research based on evidence shows that school-based skill-building programs aimed at improving social and emotional outcomes can also improve academic outcomes. Substance abuse is not about willpower; it's about learning to cope with life and its challenges. The Lifeway staff consists of a director, Paula Wilkinson-Smith, counselors, and a board of directors that has both youth and adults on the board. The purpose is to facilitate identification of drug and alcohol-related problems and to provide approval of proven strategies to help youth. This is accomplished through alcohol and drug prevention, early intervention, and outpatient counseling services. As a result, there have been economic benefits resulting from reduced incarceration, reduced property damage, and reduced physical and mental health costs. The Lifeway staff has created an exceptional program for assisting its counselors and other community agencies to develop helping relationships with students and strategies for positive growth. Lifeway has hosted several community programs to help youth and their families in the Rapid City area. They include Red Ribbon Week, public seminars on the dangers of synthetic drugs, and damage to youth developing brain tissue caused by drug and alcohol use. Response from the community includes appreciation for public information on the alarming statistics of youth and drug alcohol use in our area, suicide threats and attempts, teens driving under the influence, and youth homelessness problems, among others. This leads to the recognition that mentally, socially, and physically healthy youth are positive for our community. Youth who become knowledgeable about positive strategies for dealing with social stresses and negative influences can contribute to a more productive, healthier future for Rapid City. For these reasons, the Standing Committee on Sustainability recognizes Lifeways with a sustainability award for their program. Accepting the award is Paula Wilkinson-Smith, the Lifeways Adult Board Member. And this is our award; it's made out of pine beetle wood. And if you get a chance to look at it, it's really a nicely designed award. At the same time, I would like to recognize a few people in the audience who are part of the Lifeways organization. We have some of the Lifeways counselors available. Would you please stand? We have some of the board members available. Would you please stand? I was hoping that we'd have some of our youth who are on the board and participating with the group here tonight, but we weren't able to have anybody available. But we also would like to thank the school district for all of the support that they've given, and the city for all the support that they've given for this program. So, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Hey, Paula?
Take a picture first before we...
Oh, okay. Oh, YouTube. On behalf of Lifeways, Lifeway staff, counselors, and board, we thank the city of Rapid City, and we thank the Rapid City School District and the state of South Dakota for the funding for the past 14 years. With that funding, thousands of young people have a better life. Now, we'd like to have a short video, just a six-minute video, and it gives you a really good picture of what Lifeways does in the...
Lifeways' mission is to have all young people find their bridge, find their way to reach their goals.
It's about helping them learn how to be resilient and overcome challenges, and helping them find their strengths and where they want to go in life.
We strongly believe that the more people that we can get involved in the child's life, the more successful that child will be in reaching their goals. So, we actively reach out to other agencies in the community, to school staff, and to families.
Lifeways is able to basically swoop in and wrap themselves around that child and bring in their family and other resources to ensure that that child has the opportunity for success.
It focuses on young people and performs a service to young people that almost no one else can perform.
I think without Lifeways, I would definitely still be just trying, giving myself more chances of using, thinking that maybe this time will be different, or maybe this time I'll be okay, and not coming to the realization of the addiction and problem that I had.
There is a mentality of invincibility among all the students where they don't see the dangerous decisions they make and the dangerous activities that they're participating in as what they really are.
Someone has to be brave enough and qualified to intervene in that child's life and let them know the dangers, convince them of the dangers, and convince them of alternative behaviors that can help.
If you can be there for youth, if they can come to you and ask questions, if you can be a good role model, if you can be support for them, that's going to make a huge world of difference.
All right, here we have a great kid, and what can we, as a team, do to support this child? And turning things around and getting back on track and reaching the goals that they have.
The ability for counselors to reach kids and to do so efficiently, to do so in the school environment, is the proper way to do so.
We have to be on the ground, and we have to be reaching every student. And that's what we can do in the schools. They're all, that's where they're at, and that's where we're at.
It's always exciting to be able to see that aha moment for youth, and then really seeing them, like, take ownership of their own lives.
When it comes down to it, to the end of the day, like, you have to be able to love yourself and do what's best for you. And drugs and alcohol, just abusing drugs and alcohol doesn't help anybody, not a single person on this planet.
You don't have to be perfect to make a change. And you control, like, what you do in your life. Like, that's not, like, if another kid is doing drugs, you don't have to do drugs, and you can help that person change and get off the road they're on.
A lot of students will go through the program, and then they'll bring their friends in and say, hey, you know, my friend's going through a similar circumstance, and I was wondering if you could talk to them.
If Lifeways were to be taken from our community, everything would go back to normal. Like, it would be so easy for everyone to just brush all of the problems that are in our community under the rug.
You know, I feel that if Lifeways wasn't in our community, it would be a lot harder for kids to be drug and alcohol-free. And, you know, I feel that there would be a lot more bullying and a lot more, you know, cyberbullying and a lot more stuff like that, because I feel that through this program, people start to realize that it's not cool to be bullied; it's not cool to be smoking and drinking.
I've been in schools where Lifeways is not involved, or has been involved and then was removed. And I've saw that after Lifeways, that drug usage went up, and that a lot of kids felt like there was less purpose in school.
Well, if Lifeways went away, I think the loss would be that moment that we cannot identify at the time, where we intervene in a kid's life and it makes a difference.
Youth is the future. And so, if the youth has things going on in their lives that hindering their paths towards success, that also hinders the magnitude of how well the future will be as well.
In the end, the kids of today are going to be our adults of tomorrow, and we need to do everything we can to help them live a healthy lifestyle. And Lifeways is the key to that success.
Our community's future is only as good as its youth. And we're not going to sustain ourselves and have a good community based on the 50, and 60, and 70-year-olds here. It's going to be on the 13, and 14, and 15-year-olds. And so, every moment, every effort, every dollar we can invest in that generation today will help us all in the future.
It really is an honor to be able to witness and stand by students and see, like, them grow.
Lifeways has helped me mature in noticing that people are not always what you just see on the outside; there's more to people, and to give people, like, second chances.
It's not about judging; it's not about saying that someone's wrong; it's not about telling them what to do. It's just about showing them there's another way, and that they can overcome, and that life can be beautiful. And even when it's not, they can find strength in that, and some positive can still come out of that.
There were moments where I didn't know if I even wanted a future, and Lifeways has opened my eyes to how great a future could really be, and the potential that I have to make it everything that I want and everything that I've dreamed of, and not just for myself, but for my career. And now, thanks to Lifeways, I know what I want to do, and also, more importantly, what I want to be.
request forms, so we'll move along to the non-public hearing items, items two through 65, and we'll open public comment on items two through 40. And we have no speaker request forms on these as well. We'll close that. Now, on to consent items, items two through 40. Is there anyone that wants to pull items from the consent calendar for consideration? Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item number 26, as I will be abstaining from this item. Thank you.
Any other items? And can I have a motion to approve all of the consent items two through 40, with the exception of 26?
Move.
Moved by Estes, second by Scott. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Okay, now, on to item number 26, which Elderwoman Scott is abstaining from. That is to renew a contract with Pete Lean and Sons, Inc. for ice sand material for one year.
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Estes and second by Roberts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, we are on to non-consent items, items 41 through 65. We'll open and close public comment on those, as there are no speaker request forms. Move on to ordinances, starting with number 41. Go to Elderwoman Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 41 is a second reading of ordinance number 6083, an ordinance to revise the name and update the mission of the Rapid City Fire Department by amending chapter 2.36 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Make a motion to approve.
Second by John Roberts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 42 is a second reading of ordinance number 6075, an ordinance to amend provisions concerning special event alcohol beverage licenses to allow charitable organizations to sell donated alcohol by amending section 5.12.035 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Make a motion to approve.
Second by Darla Drew. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 43 is the first reading of ordinance number 6077, an ordinance to amend certain provisions in chapter 15.48 of the Rapid City Municipal Code concerning manufactured homes and manufactured home parks. I make a motion to approve.
Second by Richie Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. On to number 44. We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 44 is technology informational update on the downtown area master plan. I believe we were going to have a presentation.
Yes, good evening. Sarah Hansel, Long Range Planner, Community Planning and Development Services. Item number 44 is an update on the downtown plan process. I am pleased to introduce three members from the downtown plan consulting team that we're working with. Brad Siegel, J.J. Folsom, and Graham Smith are here this evening. Just a quick background, in June, the city, in partnership with the Downtown Business Improvement District and Destination Rapid City, released an RFP to contract a downtown area master planning process. We received eight bids, or eight proposals, for the process, for the project, and through a competitive, the competitive bid process, we, in the study advisory committee, selected Puma's team. Their team brings specific expertise in real estate economics, urban planning, and downtown development specifically. So, really excited to have them work with us in our community. So, right now, I'd like to invite them up to share a little bit more about themselves and the project.
Thank you, and thank you for having us this evening for a brief presentation. And then, we've got, I believe we've got some time for questions regarding the downtown plan process and also our team. We have some slides. We also were, the mayor told us ahead of time, if our presentation would be about 30 seconds, and I told him that we probably would, we try to stick to that time, but we might go a little bit more. We will be brief, though, in terms of our presentation tonight. Part of what we're doing tonight is to introduce you to us, to the individuals who'll be working on the downtown plan. I'm Brad, Brad Siegel, and I am the president of Progressive Urban Management Associates. We are out of Denver. There are eight of us, so J.J. Folsom, my colleague tonight, and myself, we are a quarter of our firm. We have worked in 35 states, about 150 cities. In terms of my background, I bring about 30 years of experience in community and downtown development work. And I got started in this business in Denver, which is my hometown. So, I worked in the Lower Downtown Historic District of Denver back in the late 80s, early 90s. J.J. Folsom, who you'll be meeting shortly, is a transportation and land use planner, brings about 20 years of experience. Erica Heller, who's also a core to our team, was in town about two weeks ago. She brings regulatory and zoning knowledge, in addition to economics background as well. In terms of our role as the lead in this, we are certainly going to keep the process on track. We're under a timeline to deliver a downtown plan by late spring, early summer. Our expectation and hope is to get the community involved and engaged, and really bring in the community's vision for downtown, but also balance that with market realities. Another component that we bring to this is that we are very adept in national trends affecting downtowns. This is something that we keep abreast of, and we think there are many things that Rapid City could take advantage of in terms of different market trends, and certainly would be happy to address that more when we get into questions tonight. We are also experts on public-private partnerships and implementation, and you'll see, that's a focus of the planning process, so that we have something that is actionable and results in tangible improvements for downtown. I'd like to ask Graham Smith to join me. He is from Kansas City. I'll tell you a little bit about his firm as well.
Thank you, Brad. My name's Graham Smith. I'm the vice president of planning for Gould Evans. We're a 40-year-old architecture and planning firm out of Kansas City. Go Royals. Sorry, I had to plug, had to plug the World Series trophy. Of the three of us up here tonight, I'm the newbie. I've got about 17 or 18 years of experience in urban planning and design. I come from a public sector background, having worked for the city of Kansas City. And joining me, a couple of our folks that you may see from time to time, Chris Brewster in the middle there, 19 years of experience doing urban design, but also regulations, similar to Erica with Puma. And so, we're going to have them tackle a couple of, a couple of your downtown issues. And then, Robert Whitman from our office is a landscape architect. We are responsible, if I do this right, we are responsible for, as Brad says, the creative, creative side of this. We're focusing on the design side, both the public realm, including the streetscapes, parks, and public amenities, but also the private side. One of the outcomes of this project will be design guidelines for future development within downtown. And then, we're also here supporting the public engagement process.
I guess I should have started with go Broncos, too, I suppose. In any event, what perhaps set our team apart, at least what your staff told us and the selection committee told us set us apart in the selection process, is we very much believe in a market-based planning approach. So, at the very beginning of the process, we are trying to get an understanding of market opportunities for Rapid City, and then also how downtown fits into all of that. So, as I mentioned earlier, we do bring an understanding of different trends that are shaping downtowns. Then, we're trying to get as solid an understanding of local market dynamics. We will be reaching out to the community in a variety of forums. We'll be launching an online survey here in the next couple of weeks. There is a project website that's gone live. We have identified a number of working groups with about 60 or 70 downtown stakeholders that we'll be meeting with over the next couple of days. Public open houses are scheduled for January 13 and 14, where we'll be inviting the entire community to come and plan with us. In February, a design charrette, where a variety of these ideas come together. And then, we will also be working with the community in the spring as we put together the different action strategies and the priorities, and also figure out, maybe most importantly, how do we mobilize our resources, and how do we finance some of these ideas that we come up with. Also, this evening, we'll be asking council, council members, how you would like to individually and collectively be involved in the process. We do have several opportunities for you and also your constituents as we move forward. I did mention, too, implementation focus, so this may be the second reason why we were selected on this. Plans are great, but there's a pretty good stack of plans in this town already. So, we certainly don't want to be added to the stack of plans. And a good part of what we'll be coming up with is essentially a business plan for implementation. So, looking at different organizational structures, finance. Your Business Improvement District is a partner in this. We, that's a subspecialty of ours. We've helped to create and also reform more than 65 improvement districts throughout the country. We're also bringing knowledge of best practices. Perhaps there's some additional financial and organizational tools that can be deployed in downtown as we come up with these different ideas. And a variety of recommendations. We may come up with some ideas that are ambitious and may take some time, but we're also looking for quick wins. Are there a variety of improvements that can be undertaken downtown in the short term and really show the community some visible actions before even the planning process is done? So, at this point, I'm going to bring my colleague, J.J. Folsom, up. J.J. is the project manager on this. He is quickly going to go through the process, and then we will end with, again, we hope, some time for some questions from you.
Thank you, Brad. He went through...
He went through most of this schedule in his presentation, so I'm going to just skip right over this slide. I'll just note that after we do our community open houses and our design charrette in the early winter, we'll, we'll be coming back with a draft plan review, and at some point between April and May, we'll meet with you all again, and then we'll have public open houses towards the end of the project. Some of our initial observations in this town, this is my fourth trip here, so it came out in June, and as Brad mentioned, I was out here in September and October, and then on this trip. Rapid City has many, many strong assets. Your street network, it's a very walkable downtown area. We've spent literally hours and hours walking around town. The Main Street Square, your historic building stock is incredible, and your proximity to the university. So, that leads to the next one, that the connectivity to that university is critical, how the core of downtown and the university, how that synergy works together, as well as connecting to your neighborhoods to the west, neighborhoods to the south, and your incredible green space to the north, improving that connectivity. One thing we heard a lot of is that people's perception of downtown is quite small, just this core area. We're looking at, you know, how do you expand that? How do you move beyond Fifth Street? And also, in some of our interviews, we've, we've done about a dozen interviews or so, you know, some of the past culture in the town, a little resistant to change. The zoning needs to be more flexible, particularly for a mix of uses, and particularly east of Fifth Street. And then, we've heard a lot about housing, and then the market trends as well suggest that opportunity for more housing in the downtown area. So, just briefly, some of our initial, some of our improvements that we're identifying initially, again, we're just in the, in the, in the third month of this process, is improving some of these historic buildings, doing some facade improvements. Heard a lot about that from people. Wayfinding and lighting and streetscape in the cores, very strong, but once you get a block or two in different directions, that kind of falls apart, so we need to look at that. A need for quality housing in the downtown area, very important. And then, to go along with that, services and amenities for folks that want to move to downtown, give them more of a reason to move downtown and have those daily needs. Also, multiple transportation choices, improved transit, bicycle pedestrian connections to the university in the downtown cores, critical. And continue to improve your bicycle. You have a great start on, on what you're doing for bicycles, but also looking at how you connect to the River Trail from downtown, and activating downtown east of Fifth Street. Can't stress that enough. And, you know, in order to grow the university and downtown together, it's going to be critical to activate that portion of your downtown. So, this is our final slide. I'm going to turn it over to Brad. We're just going to ask you some questions now.
And to conclude our presentation tonight, we really wanted, to the extent we have time this evening, to hear any comments from council, certainly any questions you may have, but those first two questions, pretty key. With the city investing in this process and investing in a downtown plan, what, what are your expectations? What would you like us to accomplish before we're, we're all standing here in the spring viewing a plan? What are some of the things we should address and, and make sure we don't leave those things out? And then, secondly, council. How do we include council, your various commissions, constituents? What are the best ways to involve you in this process moving forward, to the extent we've got time tonight or afterwards? We'd love to hear thoughts on that. So, at this point, I know, Mr. Mayor, that was more than thirty seconds, but a brief overview on the team and our process moving forward.
Good presentation. We have a few people lined up to ask you a question here. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, being, for being here tonight. Look forward to the product that you're going to deliver at the end. I know it's going to take a lot of work and a lot of time. My question to you is more of a broader question about working in previous municipalities. What do you typically find, or I'll just say the top two or three barriers to even some of the low-hanging fruit type of things that you identify for municipalities? What are those barriers typically end up being as far as the implementation of, of that type of thing? If you can speak to that.
Sure, be happy to. And I'd actually like my colleagues to join me, because many of these questions will, will take team, team response. There are several things we look at in a, in a community, and also, I need to warn you, I'm, I'm old enough, and I've been in this long enough, that the whole process of downtown revitalization has changed, certainly as long as I've been in this for thirty years. And, and to answer your question, I want to point out, this is, this is a fascinating time for downtowns across the country. This is really the first time in any of our lifetimes that market trends are really favoring downtown revitalization. There are different demographic groups, younger people, twenty to thirty-five, also boomers, who are interested in walkable urban amenities, such as we have in downtown Rapid City. So, in terms of challenges, part of this is, number one, is really understanding what are the market opportunities, because many towns are just sort of acknowledging that these market opportunities are arising. We've met a number of young people in this town so far, people in their twenties and thirties who maybe grew up here, and then they left. They went to college, they went to Denver, or they went to other cities, they went to the West Coast. They're back in Rapid City because they, they're attached here, they have family here. This is a good value for them, to raise a family. And what they want to get involved with, they, they want to get involved in helping to recreate their city, and they want to get involved in, in what's going on downtown. So, I'd say that's a second barrier that we've run into, is, is do we have a way for young people who are either staying in the community or moving back to, to the city, for them to get involved in downtown development efforts? And then the third thing is, is just far more basic. We'll come up with some ideas, but what are the ways to finance these things? Because, you know, we're, you know, there's not unlimited money. There are many priorities in a city. So, are there different ways that we can creatively finance things that, that are desirable, but what's really essential? And I'll sort of end on that note. That's something we're hoping to do here, is, is to prioritize what is essential, and then provide a roadmap on how to do that. Thank you. Look forward to it.
Okay, now Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I just encourage you to work with our mayor and his staff to schedule meetings with us at least, I'd say at least twice, where we get together and just think out loud and listen to each other, and listen to what you have. And I would also encourage that we may include planning commission members, and also some past members of council and commission, because I know I sat in one of your meetings up there, and you learn a lot just by hearing from other people, and I would really like to see that happen. And another one is financial tools, how we're going to get this done, some long-range financial planning and programming. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions for you. So, you talk about, you know, you've got your working groups ready in the business area, you're talking about working groups with the community, and you mentioned design charrette. Could you please explain that term?
Sure.
No, you can't. What?
Graham, the, the urban designer.
So, it's a fancy word for workshop.
Okay.
It has some actual meaning, but I'll say it's a fancy word for workshop, and what we try to do is, what we try and do is, as much as possible, engage people in the design process. So, instead of giving a presentation or talking at people, we want them to draw with us on maps, give us ideas, help us create the plan for downtown. And so, the charrette process is, is a short kind of, it's a short burst of time that allows people to really dive in and, and start to address some issues and come up with solutions for your downtown. And so, it's intended to be just that, an intensive short burst of interaction.
How short? What do you mean, two hours?
No, this is a two-day process.
Okay.
So, and through that, through that two-day process, we'll have different, different groups of folks coming in and giving their input, and then we'll go through some review with city staff. One of our intentions is to have you all involved in that process, as well as planning commission, because they'll be looking at this plan as well. So, we haven't laid that out fully yet, but our intention is to have those groups come in, the working group members, council, planning commission. We talked about some other groups. We, we still have yet to lay that out, though.
I'd just like to let you know that there is an east-of-Fifth business group that really wants to engage with you in, in this process, and I'm encouraged by that, because usually when there's a, an extension of a bid district, it's met with some resistance. But it seems like these, these guys get it, and they are a younger population, so I, I think that you can look forward to working with them. I just read today that we are number nine in destinations for retirement-age people, and so I think that should be part of your development process, whether it's, I don't know, ADA, just, or easier access, or areas downtown that, that really do cater to not only the youth group, because that's very important, but also to the, as we're looking forward to the economic impact of retirees on Rapid City. Thank you.
Absolutely.
That would be my, the end of my comments for now.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, thank you very much for the great presentation. Three or four different things that I'm interested in, and because I'm limited on time, so you may want to take some notes here, or jot these points down, is I'm very interested in quality housing, how you see, what your concept is, how to obtain that. The public-private partnerships, I'm going, I really need some more schooling on that, how that works effectively, and I mean effectively. And it, the joining up with the School of Mines, as you mentioned in your presentation, how we can get them involved in this. There's a very good group of students over there called the Senate, and if you have an opportunity to visit with that group as well, I would encourage that. And then you touched also on funding, the tools and resources that we have available now, and if we can develop or should be looking at some new tools for funding as well. That's my points, and be very interested in hearing your response. Thank you.
Councilman, all four of those points are actually wrapped closely together and interdependent, so I, I think we'll find that part of the path to housing, and now is really, should be a window of opportunity. Really, the next five to ten years should be a window of opportunity to take advantage of some very favorable market trends to get some housing built in downtown Rapid City. It will take some, some, maybe some new for Rapid City approaches in terms of public and private working together. You do have a very strong private sector partner here with your Business Improvement District. We've been really impressed with, with the whole operation, the board leadership that they have there. You've got some pretty strong business leaders down here as well, so it seems like the time is, is right to be talking about these types of things. We do think we can bring some ideas on financing, but we're going to be pragmatic and make sure that we're not bringing in pie-in-the-sky ideas, but some ideas that, that would fit Rapid City and, and also could be implemented in the context of, of South Dakota. And then lastly, the, the School of Mines were actually, already have initiated discussions with the school. They see the value in not only connecting to downtown, but being part of a downtown revitalization strategy. It helps them recruit students, helps them recruit faculty and others. We also bring some pretty interesting models of how universities have helped in this overall solution, both in the financing, in the public-private partnership, even helping with credit enhancements on, on housing. So, we're pretty excited. So, the, again, the four items you listed almost blend together as, as part of one of the packages that we'll be looking at.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation and coming before us and giving us a heads-up on the work that you've already started and that you'll be going. Again, you pretty much have already heard it, and by all of us talking about it, I think you can see how important it is, and that is going to be the financing package.
Yes.
Our budget is strained as it is now. We just went through updating the Plan Rapid City Plan a few years back, and part of that element was also a segment on trying to find additional revenue sources or alternate financing as we grow and, and develop our economic growth of, of Rapid City. And here's one of my questions for you, because what stops us is, in the state of South Dakota, we are an automatic form of government, and we're kind of hamstrung as far as what opportunities we have for alternate financing. How many other cities or communities in South Dakota have you worked with?
Well, we worked on a downtown plan in Sioux Falls last year, so we have Sioux Falls, we have you, and that is our South Dakota portfolio to date. So, you are going to help us.
Right, because you understand Sioux Falls is a charter.
Yeah.
So, their form of government, they have a little bit more freedom than we do, where we have to abide more with state law than, than, than they do. They have a, a couple other opportunities that we do not have.
We're, we're hoping that we can work with the leadership here, both the elected leadership, also your, your staff has been monitoring this. We've actually reviewed all the Plan, Plan Rapid City materials. We're hoping to build on that. So, it's our understanding, you've been a, been a bit of a one-horse town with tax increment financing, in terms of financing these types of things, and we think there are some alternatives that, that you could still do locally, despite your legal status in the state. It's also understanding that, that Rapid City is working through your City Municipal League on some legislative measures as well.
Our staff is doing an excellent job. They are working with the municipal league as well, as they're in constant contact with our legislators from this area, but as you probably have already figured out, and we're no different, government is slow.
Government can be slow. So, I, and, and I will say, that's a bias in our work, is that we will really focus on what, what can we control in, in Rapid City? And are there some unique tools here that, that we really could utilize where we're not dependent on the state? I don't know what those are, but we've had some success in, in finding those and sleuthing those out in, in other cities, and we relish the opportunity to do that here.
Well, I am looking forward to it, so I, I, I will wait for your report, and I, any way that you can use us to help you out, that would be wonderful.
Thank you. We will.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. I believe that you alluded to some of the points that, I think our biggest obstacle is our planning and zoning part of, if you, you, I think we have some really good private partnerships downtown that want to grow some of the things, but because of the way we treat new development and old development, it's almost like the same thing, it's almost impossible with the zoning and things that we have now to actually create that housing environment downtown. So, I'm assuming that from your guys' history, that's probably where you're going to go with a lot of this. The other thing that I just wanted to mention to my colleagues and, and to you gentlemen is that Black, the School of Mines of Technology, which you're probably aware of, is doing the same thing you're doing right now, and also, the county is doing the same thing you're doing right now. But there's a little donut hole that we're missing down there, and I'm not sure exactly how we go about that, but that's that fairground activity node down there that actually adjoins the school with the downtown, and there's also city land that's involved there, and I'm not sure how we approach that, but if we don't take advantage of what you guys are doing now and add that in, we're going to miss a really, really strong opportunity to, to, to look at that and see what the future holds for that. I mean, we looked at the Civic Center, but I think there's a lot bigger opportunity in that donut hole between the School of Mines and the eastern part of downtown there, because a lot of that land is owned by the city, but also in the county, you know, eighty, eighty percent of the people that live in the county are right here in Rapid City, so if there's a way that we can synergize that opportunity with them working on their plan, us working on our plan, and, and the school working on their plan, I mean, there, there could really be something that could, really great could happen here. So, I'm hoping that my colleagues, you know, pay attention to what's going on. If we get that opportunity, if we need to do something to, to close that gap, that you'll bring that to our attention.
Absolutely, and I do want to commend your staff, who even in our short startup period have been excellent in connecting us to these other efforts. So, our intention is to integrate and leverage as much as we can. And, and another thing I want to mention, it goes back to the question on financing tools, the zoning and regulatory issue is a financial issue for those who want to build things downtown. So, in terms of financial tools, it's not just about creating incentives or, or money, but also there's regulatory issues, zoning issues, a whole variety of issues that relate to real estate that we're going to be looking at.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have too many questions. A lot of things have been covered already, but one of the things that I wanted to ask was, are you also looking at the overall parking of downtown? Because that's been kind of a detriment towards-
Because that's been kind of a detriment towards revitalizing downtown, especially for the housing part of it, because if we go down, we build lofts, we build apartments, we build whatever, if you don't have parking, that's a pretty key factor to that.
Do you want to address parking? I'm just kidding. Um, we've, we've already, I, I laugh, but I understand that parking is a serious issue, and we, we look at parking strategies in virtually every city that, that we work in. Um, I, I think part of what we want to do here is, is sort of bridge the gap between perception and reality on parking. What, what are the needs from an economic standpoint versus what are some of the perceived challenges with parking? Uh, you will see us come up with parking management strategies, which is how do we best utilize the existing supply of parking first before we embark on other costly remedies, which may be including building more structures, that type of thing? Um, and as real estate economists, we're very keyed into this, um, and particularly in, in a market like, like Rapid City, we're auto-dependent here. You know, cars are not going away anytime soon, and, and sure, people are riding bikes, they're using other forms of transportation, so I would say we're realists about parking, we're going to look at it, uh, very seriously throughout the plan. However, our bias is to see how can we best manage the existing system, the, the existing supply, um, before we get into very costly remedies to increase it.
And I totally agree with you there. The only problem with Rapid City is the mentality of, of people that use downtown, they don't want to walk two or three blocks. That's the biggest issue that we have, because we have a parking structure next to the courthouse downtown that's eighty percent empty all the time, but people don't want to use that and walk three blocks to downtown. They want parking that is close, and that's always been a tremendous issue we've had here in Rapid City. So, thank you, I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with, I think it's going to be good for the downtown.
Thank you, Councilman.
Charity Doyle?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd just like to make a motion to acknowledge.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Great, thanks again for the time tonight, and we look forward to working with all of you.
Now, we're on to, uh, to the alcohol beverage license applications, the reissuance from item forty-five to sixty-four. Have a motion to approve all of these?
Approve.
Second.
Um, Wyffenbach and Doyle, um, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, on to number sixty-five, go to Darla Drew.
Stop it. Well, I had, um, seen the wonderful presentation that the, uh, Police Department had put together with answering some of the questions I've gotten about how we're going to, um, enforce safety and, um, well, just, let's just say, safety issues in, in the Greenway, especially with Memorial Park. Those kinds of things have been brought to the fore just recently, and you guys did a great job on, on making up this, um, presentation, the video that we're going to see, and this is just a good way to make sure that the public gets a chance to see this video, so I'd ask, ask the chief if he'd share that today, so, thank you.
You're welcome, and if you don't mind, if I could just make a few comments after we show the video, I would appreciate it.
We've, we've had a couple of incidents where we've had some very high-profile, uh, incidents that have occurred right down along that bike path area, but, um, you know, it's, it's one of those deals where we're working on it. Um, these cases are a significant priority for the Criminal Investigation Division, and we're throwing a ton of manpower and resources toward solving, uh, these cases.
I believe that there is a concern in the public that, that they may be assaulted or may have some kind of confrontation, to include a physical confrontation down on the bike path, but for the most part, daytime and other, and other times, um, really, we've had no incidents to speak of.
I think there's a, a public concern out there right now that's fueled by an air of, uh, not having all the facts and not being really in tune with what's going on in Rapid City.
The Rapid City Police Department takes all of these assaults and anything else that occurs very seriously. Uh, that's why right now we have a, an entire unit that's, uh, spending time down there because of the, of people's concerns about, um, about their safety going down on the bike path, so we're spending extra manpower, hours, time, and, uh, dealing with the best, the best we can.
What we have is, we have a population of people that make their home, uh, in and around the creek area. Um, these are people that sleep so that they can wake up the next day to begin drinking again, uh, and they drink all day until, uh, they either run out of alcohol, or they, they spend their time trying to find ways to purchase more alcohol and get their hands on more alcohol, until it's time to fall asleep and wake up the next day and start the day again.
These folks become so intoxicated that they are simply unable to defend themselves, they're passed out under bridges, they're, they're passed out on picnic tables, they're sleeping on top of picnic tables at one, two, three in the morning, or, or anytime of the day for that matter, and they find themselves victims to these violent assaults or robberies simply because they're not able to defend themselves.
Our street crimes units did take it upon themselves to, uh, to, uh, spend a lot more time, pay a lot more attention down to the bike path and, uh, in the areas and businesses around the bike path.
If we're able to get them out of the area, um, get them a ride home, or someplace where they have a friend or family member, or if need be, we can take them to detox, we can get that person off the street to where they don't themselves become a victim of, of any type of violent assault or other type of crime.
We have an incredible investment in resources in trying to solve these crimes. Every tip that comes in, whether it's on our four-one-one, uh, line, or it's called in anonymously, uh, all of these tips are thoroughly investigated so that we can really find out what's going on and make sure that, uh, we can hold the people accountable for these actions.
We've got a very good bike path, um, the city has spent, you know, a lot of money on making a really great, uh, park and bike path, and just a place for people to enjoy. Um, we do have very few crimes actually occurring on these areas, and people should go out and enjoy them.
I believe it's a safe spot for anybody to, to enjoy. The bike path was built for a reason, the Greenway is there for a reason, it's for, it's for the community to stop, enjoy it, relax in the sun, uh, take your dog out, run around, take the kids out, fly a pike, there, fly a kite. I think it's plenty safe. Um, now, for those that are out committing these crimes, um, just know that we are out to look for you, and if we find you violating these crimes, we will take that zero-tolerance approach. If you're out there with, uh, an open bottle of liquor, if you're out there assaulting somebody, you know, you've earned your trip to jail.
So, again, the, uh, title of the production is Guardians of the Greenway, and the reason that we created this video is to, basically to tell our own story. There's been a lot of discussion recently and some misunderstanding regarding safety and personal security issues in the downtown and Memorial Park areas. I think everyone or most people know that Rapid City has had a vulnerable population of intoxicated individuals that congregate in the downtown area, the area of the bike path, Prairie Market, et cetera. It's been going on for decades. Due to circumstance, the police over time have become the twenty-four-seven caretakers of this chronic, chronically intoxicated population in our community. It may be easy for some to look the other way, but not for the police. Our officers are constantly mindful of the welfare of others, and they're, therefore take a guardian approach over this population, and in my opinion, we treat them with a high degree of dignity and respect, oftentimes in very difficult circumstances. To summarize the problem, we have a lack of options to deal with those that choose to continue to be in an intoxicated state day after day. Detox is for those that want to get dry, jail is for those that commit crimes. Unfortunately, we overutilize both the jail and detox because we don't have a better place for them to go. I want the council and community to know that we're working very hard with the Sheriff's Office and other stakeholders in the criminal justice system. We currently are finalists in a grant opportunity from the MacArthur Foundation that could provide a new level of care for this population. It could be called a solution center, or a sobering station, whatever it's called, it would be a safer place than in the parks or under bridges, and the end result will be fewer victimizations occurring amongst this vulnerable population. We're doing our best at this time, considering the limited resources and the options that are available to our officers. I'd like to thank Brendan Medina, who is sitting right here, our department's Community Relations Specialist for putting this video together, and our Street Crimes Unit for continuing to be guardians of this population until we, as a community, come up with a better alternative to ensure their safety. I also want to thank the council and the community for standing beside us and supporting us as we move forward to find a more dignified approach to this problem.
Thank you, Chief, we'll go to Ritchie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, and thank you to your staff for bringing this forward, and, um, also to older woman, uh, Darla Drew, to, uh, bring this matter to our attention. I just wanted to inform the, the, uh, public as well, is that I took a businessperson and another police officer, uh, to, primarily just for information purposes, but we did a walkabout during the downtown area at night, uh, and, and it was around, I don't know, six-thirty, seven o'clock by the time we, we finished up, but, uh, we felt very safe, uh, the businessperson and I felt very safe. Um, we made that trip downtown, and I still haven't made it over to the Spinning Rock, but I think that's a very interesting artifact that we have available in the city, but it, but it is safe to get downtown, and I took the tourist route from, uh, Howard Johnson's down to the Civic Center, down to, uh, Memorial Park, and when, then we'd returned, and, uh, again, we had no issues, not approached by anyone at, at any time, uh, we didn't see anybody lurking around in any, uh, unsafe areas, so I felt very comfortable, and, and again, um, I, I would encourage other council members to, uh, take the same walkabout. Thank you again to all.
Darla Drew?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. I, I just wanted to say that one of the things that, um, kind of inspired me to ask you to be here is that I did, did go on a ride-along on a Friday night, the, the nine-to-one shift, and I found, um, the compassionate way that the officers acted towards the, the people that they found, um, in inebriated circumstances was, um, a real eye-opener for me. I, I was, um, so the Guardians of the Greenway is, is an incredibly great way to say what you, um, feel towards this population. It's, it's not aggressive, it's, it's compassionate, so thank you for your work.
Ron Wyffenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I appreciate that our, my colleagues are taking up the Police Department on these ride-alongs, because it really changes the way you sleep at night, and, uh, I appreciate the Guardians of the Greenway, and I, and, and, and people have heard me from this bottom to the dais talk several times about, uh, alcohol consumption in our community. It's huge. When, when, when we relate it to teenage alcohol consumption earlier, we had life waste, and, and, and it keeps coming back like a funnel, always to one thing, always to alcohol consumption. Eighty percent of the crimes are committed by people intoxicated. Um, some of the people can't, uh, control their desire to drink alcohol, and then, which forces the homelessness thing, it forces them to live by the creek and sleep there, and, uh, but the key factor, it keeps coming back to alcohol consumption, and I think that all the programs and all those things in the world really can't change the difference of, of individual people taking responsibility, but also, taking responsibility for our roles as mentors and leaders in the community to say, you know what, we could talk about this all day long, and we can show cute little videos and all this stuff, or we can actually say, we need to resolve this, and we can actually put a, a plan in place and start attacking it, and I believe, from what, what I'm seeing here, is that I think that Chief has something in his mind that's going to be coming forward in the future, and I'm just guessing, but, uh, and we talk about the, the limited resources. I'm a firm believer that the cause of this resource, the, the alcohol consumption is, is a direct cause and effect of, of what we have out there, so there's, it's an opportunity for our community leaders, whether it's the county, the state, or the city, or we working all together, to go, you know what, it's time, it's time to quit overloading the detox, it's time to quit overloading the jails, it's time to say, who's responsible for this, and where is, where does the funding resource lie to fund what we really need to do in our community? We can continue to sit here and talk about these things, or we can add other organizations who think they can do these things, or we can become the real leaders of our community and say, it's time, it's time to quit talking about it, it's time, I keep hearing these things about, let's have a conversation about it, it's time for a conversation, and I'm like, it, the conversations in my mind are past that. When the headlines in the Rapid City journals say, teenage alcohol consumption in South Dakota is highest in the nation, I think it's past time. I think it's past time, we've got an opportunity now, with two people, our chief and our mayor, who both have a very good handle on this situation in our community, that we take it seriously, and we look at what's happening in our community, we look at what we're doing as a council, when we approve alcohol licenses and we do these things, what kind of messages to send, all combined together, what's good for them is good for us. If we want to move on, we need to get with our legislators, because we are limited in what we can do for funding the resources, but we need to start going, where does this need to come from? And it comes from the people that are profiting from it. The bars, the restaurants, all these people, need to look in the mirror and go, we contribute to this, we take the profits from it, now we need to look and go, why should every citizen be tackled with that? We need to look at these funding sources and say, how do we get this done? Chief, I appreciate it, I think you got something in your mind that's going to come forward in the future, and I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Harry Wright?
Several years ago, I had the privilege of being involved with multiple parties across the state of South Dakota that were working with the alcohol costs to the taxpayer across the state of South Dakota. Issues such as the county budget, I believe about half of it is jails, jail court, cops, all that kind of stuff, jail medical, it's about forty million. If you talk to anybody that I, so what I do, that the, uh, crime rate is highly influenced by the toxic case level of individuals, probably seventy, eighty or more percent of the crimes are involved with alcohol consumption or under the influence. Currently, in this county, the state of South Dakota, the vast majority of that's carried by property tax, and wherever we've gone to get assistance from the state to help bring the funding to a, a level where we can address the issues related, not only on the criminal side of it, but the social and the medical side of it, we never get anywhere. There's been a group of people from Sioux Falls, and there was this young family, where the young woman was killed several years ago because a drunk ran into the back of their boat, she was a game fishing park warden, working and getting nowhere with her state. I do ask and I plead, because we were on, on a microphone in before the public, that our ta, our legislators assist us in getting the resources to address the issues, not only from the law enforcement, but for the ability to address the issues that cause these problems. And it's unfair to put all of this on the property taxpayers on a local level, it should be paid for by those uses of the alcohol, and probably the best way is through a sales tax or something like it. We need to go that way, because we don't have the resources to address the problems we have in our community or our state caused by alcohol abuse, and we need assistance from the state to help us solve that problem. We cannot do it alone locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge and entertain the floor for a second.
Thank you, I just want to say that, you know, I think it's, some of this is a, a little bit of media hype these days, I think that, uh, the evolution of social media has made it seem it's a lot more dangerous world out there when I don't know that it really is factually necessarily, I think there's some, obviously some issues, but I think that Rapid City's always been a pretty safe place to raise your family, we have a pretty good police force that takes care of us, and, uh, you know, we go down to the park quite a bit, and it's, this, this city, my kids in all time, and, you know, we walk back and forth to different events at the Civic Center from downtown, and I never have ever felt unsafe, you know, there's always individuals everywhere you go, but I mean, if you're in a park anywhere in the world, two o'clock in the morning, you might run into some bad people, just throwing that out there. But I'd say, generally speaking, we have a pretty safe city, and I think we've done a great job with that, and I just, you know, like, a lot of things have been in the social media the last year or two, I think this is just one of those things where, um, perception's the reality, I suppose, but I, I think we're, we're pretty well off down here, and I appreciate the effort of everybody involved, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and second to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're going to open and close public hearing on item sixty-six, there are no speaker request forms. Item sixty-six is Resolution Number Two Thousand Fifteen dash zero-nine-seven-B, levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Laurenti and second by Ritchie Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number sixty-seven is the bill list. Item number sixty-seven is the bill list, and we'll go to Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached, at eight million, five hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars and nineteen cents.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion adjourned?
Adjourned.
Say aye if you approve.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're adjourned, good night, thank you very much.